Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting's order.
Yeah. For the re-let.
Right to. All right. Want to welcome everyone here today. We're doing LSICs. Uh, we change, we're following the law. Uh, with LSICs with identified schools. And we're allowing forty-five minutes per time. And we wanted to focus just on this, so we don't, I don't believe we have anything else. Uh, on the agenda as I see here. So we're just focused on the two schools. Here today to do, uh, have a dialogue. And uh, see where you are and where, where we hope you're going. So. That's the purpose of our meeting here today and then. We're going to, uh, open first with the pledge. And would you lead us in the pledge? We're over here, but we didn't get the plans set up, right? Right, Ms. Murphy.
Oh, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Right, motion's been made. Second, uh, Mr. Wright is in attendance via Zoom. And, uh, Mr. Wright, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, make sure that I don't forget you're here with us, so that if you have any questions, um, please get our attention. Okay, uh, all those in favor of approval of the agenda, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Aye, spirit have it, I do have it. There the, uh, motion adopted. I'll turn it over to Mr. Stevens to begin the program.
Um, like to take a moment to welcome everybody. I appreciate, uh, all those from the, from the schools that are here to, to present today. Appreciate you being here and giving them your time to, to share with our board. You know, Mr. Murphy covered it pretty well. Our, uh, LSIC presentations this year are confined to the CSI schools. And, uh, today we will open with Winchester Avenue, uh, and, uh. Soon as Jess has us, gives us a thumbs up before. Aw, thank you, Mike.
No, I mean.
Mr. Martin to the rescue.
No.
That's right, as soon as she gets it ready, you are free to go.
I'm free to go. Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for giving us this opportunity to share the school improvement work that we've been doing on Winchester Avenue. Um, presenting this evening as myself, I'm Kathy Raker, principal, um, at Winchester Avenue. I have Carrie Barr, who is my third grade teacher. And she's also our faculty senate president. Uh, and beside her is Brooke O'Connell. She is one of our wonderful parents at the school. She also serves and rolls our PTO president and a Rita Lab classroom volunteer. So thank you, ladies, for joining me this evening. Um, our faculty senate president, we did invite her, but she is presenting this evening at the Title One. Um, reading like that they're having at South Middle, so she wasn't able to attend. And I also did invite our LSIC chair, but she had a medical appointment today, so she wasn't able to attend. So we're here to talk about, um, what it means to be a comprehensive school of improvement. So, um, last year we were identified. I get that within twenty-twenty-two after the balanced score card came out, as we need additional state resources following results of the balanced score card. And I think it really shows when we go through this presentation, a snapshot of what we experienced as a school, probably the pandemic of everything we went through. Um, of ever a school. Just a little bit of background, um, Winchester Avenue, we are a pre-K to third grade school. Our enrollment is around a hundred sixty-five students, including our pre-K students all the way through third grade. If we have a special education population, about forty-five students, which roughly is about a quarter of our population. So we are a Title One school. And the reason, uh, we were identified as a CSI school was because of our academics and our attendance. Um, based on our twenty-two scores of the West Virginia Summit of Assessments. Um, our third grade students, um, tested at twenty-three point three-three percent proficient in LA. And thirty percent in proficient in math, and we did not meet the standard. Our attendance, the state looks at our chronically absent rates. Um, chronically absent means, um, they're looking at students who missed more than ten percent of the school year, so eighteen days or more. And our chronically absent rate for that year was at thirty-six point eight-four percent. Um, so we did not meet standard in that regard either. So this is a snapshot of our data you'll see here. Um, if you go back to pre-pandemic, our third grade students in twenty-eighteen, this is for ELA scores. We are at fifty-eight, one point eight-five percent proficient, and we went up to fifty-five, then came the pandemic. Um, we went out. Twenty-twenty-one, we were half brick, half click. Um, we were at thirty-one point four-two. Twenty-two, we saw some growth at twenty-three point three-three, and we continued that growth in twenty-three to thirty point seven seven. So we're making increases, but we haven't yet got back to that pre-COVID, um, range of where we were. And this is the district. So we were pretty close in twenty-twenty-three to where the district, the district scores were in ELA. So this is Winchester Avenue, this is the district score. For third grade. And if you look at the proficiency trend, um, again, pre-COVID, this is twenty-eighteen. Um. We have the district in Winchester Avenue, we were up top here, COVID hit. Um, this is the district's trend line here, this is Winchester Avenue, so we made growth here. And there for our ELA, so we were, that shows that we were close to the district. We're making, we're making progress and we're close to the district at that point. For math, our math data, again, twenty-eighteen, before the pandemic, we're at seventy point three-seven percent. Sixty-four twenty-nine, pandemic, we went out. This year is when we came back and we had two students who are half-brake and half-click. And that year I had a permanent sub in that position, um, teaching the math portion. So we were at very low scores here, twenty-twenty-two, we're rebounding to thirty. In twenty-twenty-three, we were at fifty percent, and this is the district score. So you can see that we have, by last school year, we are, we're getting pretty close to the back where we were prior to the pandemic. When we look at our math proficiency trend. This is before the pandemic, pandemic. This shows you, this is Winchester Avenue, we're projecting that trend line here of the district. As you can see, in twenty-twenty-three, we exceeded the district scores for math. So that's just kind of our data snapshot. So we were identified as a CSI, um, school. Year one is our planning year. This is just an overview of what that looked like for us at Winchester Avenue. So in twenty-twenty-two, um, in the fall, we were identified. We had a discussion with, um, our state coordinator. So at that time, Amanda Mays was our state coordinator. She came to Winchester Avenue, visited, talked about the CSI process. First, I was alerted by Mr. Stevens, he called me at home in the evening and said, let's let you know the board's meeting, you're gonna be identified. I said, okay. Um, so we started our work there. In January of twenty-twenty-three, which was last school year. Um, it's a team from the Department of Education came to the school. They walked around our school, spent the day with us, did classroom observations, and they met with staff and did interviews. Then they came back in March, conducted some more observations. And then April, they came to the county and met with some of the teaching learning team, as well as myself, and presented a draft report to the county. They came out to the school and met with every teacher on staff. Presented that draft to the school and answered questions. And then in May, um, the draft was finalized and sent out. So that was our planning year, it was just the process itself. Um, and then we started, our work really began, I would say, in May or June of that year. So one thing we had, we learned that we are PBS school, positive behavior intervention support, and we had developed this a couple of years ago. Um, but we had some new staff come on board, and this was an area that we saw a need to revisit. So we, in May of June, at the end of school, very, very beginning summer, um, it was opened up for all staff members to, was invited to, to participate. Um, and we started working back on, uh, having conversation about what are the expectations at Winchester Avenue for behaviors? And we, we rebuilt that together at the school, and we sort Winchester Avenue. So it's safety first, we enter actions. We're always achieving and we respect ourselves and others. We frame everything in the school within that language, whether it's behavior in the hallway, in the classrooms, on the bus, on the playground. Um, everywhere is framed within that. Um, and we really did a lot of work together as a staff and walking our building and saying, how can we embed this into part of our culture in our school throughout that? So we have wall stickers with our mascot owl that says, be kind. Um, we have pictures of the owl reading books, we have little outfit, walking up the steps, we have a main. One of the things we identified was like, we have two doors in front of our building, which one do we enter for the main entrance? We have, welcome to Winchester Avenue, enter here. Um, so it really, um, I think just spruced up the school and, and we had the posters hanging every which way. And we really started to talk that language. Um, and that was really, the staff came up with all of that. Um, and when school opened, the feedback that we got received from our parents was very overwhelming. They loved it, they just thought it was great. Uh, and they took notice of that. Then moving on, um, as I said, we're starting to success, then we moved into June of twenty-twenty-three. A team of teachers and myself, we flew to Orlando, Florida. And we participated in the Model Schools Conference there. And the conference was focused on rigor relevance, relationships, and student engagement. It really sparked that interest. And the excitement of how important those pieces are in framing our learning for students. And really achievements and getting kids thinking, um, and doing their work. Um, then in July, another team of teachers and myself visited, went, actually went to, um, the best within, we went to Morgantown. And participated in the Department of Education and best conference, and that was mostly focused on the science of reading information. Um, so these are pieces I'm really proud of that we participated because they invested my staff. It's not we're buying things, it's we're investing in our people. And the people in front of our kids every single day is what really matters. So making sure that we're having opportunities to grow our staff as well as our students. Year two, um, is our implementation year, we start implementing. So in August, uh, we used some of our CSI money that we were, had through this identification. And this was our first year that we placed first grade aides into the classroom. And we thought, you know, we're doing all of this work now, let's get everybody on board so we can move together as a team. And we're moving on in the same direction. So we went ahead and used that money to hire, um, aides for our second grade classroom and our third grade classroom. So, so we already have our second grade aides placed in there for this upcoming years when the, the state's gonna roll that out for us. And our third grade aide has been there. And it's been really great having that additional instructional support for our students and our teachers in the classroom. Um, and then August, we had, we planned and held two days of kinder camps for incoming kindergartners, that was lots of fun. Um, then we went into September and our school coordinator took a job as the assistant. Or the superintendent canal assistant, assistant of Canal County. So we received another one, her name is Kelly.
Massenople.
Massenople, thank you. Um, so she came to Brooklyn County in October, uh, met with her. Um, and, uh, we just kind of did some walkthroughs through our building. In December, she came back. And we, um, met, it was more of a monitoring, um, visit, so we met, Louis was there with me, we met downstairs. We went over the format of how we're gonna be monitored, we looked at our strategic plan, we looked at the math, the academics, the goals, some celebrations in our attendance. And then we said, what's gonna be the action steps for the next month of January? So we came up with that together as a team, we implemented that as a school. And then we had a Microsoft Teams meeting with her in January, the end of January to review that data. So that's what that process has looked like thus far. One of the pieces that we celebrated, um, with her in January, the end of January, is our ready. Has been a focus, an instructional focus for us for monitoring our learning. So, um, one piece of that, um, out of our, um, school improvement work, is we have four school improvement teams. And one of those is, um, curriculum instruction and assessment, and actually Ms. Barr serves on that team. And this is the work that they did together as a shared leadership. Is we said, how do we celebrate the work and the success our students are having, and how do we encourage other students to, to achieve these goals? So one, we started out with one, and that was the stories for success challenge, and that was a whole class challenge. And we wanted to see who, using the i-ready math and reading, had the highest percentage of time on task. For engaging in their personalized instruction pathway. But not only that, we wanted to look at what were those results? Not just about the time, it's about what the outcome of that time is. So we're, we're, we're making gains. Um, so every Monday, on Monday, on the morning announcements, I would, uh, we would do the three highest winners, so in third place, second place, and first grade. Um, and we would, first place, we would announce the winner. So we started with that, and you can hear the cheers right now from always, it was pretty cool in the morning announcements. So that was our first step. And that was going well, it was engaging the students, they were excited, so we said, what's our next piece? So the next piece, we started with an individual challenge. And that individual challenge we call the high flyer recognition. And that is, um, recognizing the students who passed the most lessons with one hundred percent passing accuracy rate from the prior week, in both week, in both reading and math. And we have a recognition, um, boarding the hallway downstairs by the gym. And then at the end of the nine weeks, we recognized, um, one student from each grade level who passed the most lessons with a hundred percent accuracy. So we're not just recognizing the time, but also the achievement that they're, um, having and the success that they're having with their i-ready. And this is just a picture of the boards that we came up with. This is our class challenge board, the story for success, as you can see, the percentage of time. And then this one is the individual challenge. So this is our kindergarten, whatever that we, first grade, second grade, third grade. Um, then we have for math and reading. Um, and Mondays are always super special in the school for those things. So we took our benchmark, um, assessment in September to see where our students were gonna start at the very beginning of school year. And this is our, our ready benchmark assessment data. So this is reading, as you can see, um, in the fall. The green means these are kids who were on. I do this in the fashion moment, if I wanna go.
Get close to the board.
I'm usually, I'm usually putting a mark on the board. So the green recognizes students who placed in September at mid or above grade level. The yellow recognizes students who are early on. Um, or one grade level below. The red over here is two grade levels below, and then this, the red with the stripes is three or more grade levels below. That was our fall picture. In January, when we took the reading benchmark assessment data, again. Um, you can see, um, the green has grown. We have a lot more green than we did in the fall, so, um, that is the students who are mid, early on grade level. The yellow here is here is one grade level below. And as you can see, this is ranking down here, which is two grade levels or below, or three or more grade levels below. So we saw between fall and winter, that first semester, we saw a twenty percent increase in our students' performance. Um, in reading, on their benchmark assessment. In math, it's the same kind of format. Little, little bit of reading in math. That's being middle above grade level, lot of yellow, one grade level below. And that expectation really is when we start to come in, they haven't had third grade math yet. So we expect to see a larger portion of that being in yellow. And then the red is two grade levels below or three grade levels below. As you can see. We're making growth there. Fifteen percent, um, students made growth in math, according to that benchmark data. And now at this time, um, this will be talk about the i-ready personalized instruction time on task. This is happening every day in our classroom for instruction during reading time and math time. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Barr, and she's gonna share with you, um, how she uses it in the classroom, um, how she uses it to inform our instruction. Um, and what she sees in her kids.
Right, so when presenting, uh, i-ready to us at the meeting of the school, we were all kind of learning all the, all at the exact same time. So throughout this process, we've all learned, all our teachers have been implementing this each and every day. So our goal for the year is, or sorry, the goal for each week is to get the students on between thirty to forty-five minutes. Now, as, um, Ms. Wright has explained, we've taken a step forward to focusing on two lessons passed in reading, two lessons passed in math every single week. Uh, at least. And then we even extended, extended that even more with talking about the high flyers. Where these high flyers are students that have passed maybe three lessons or maybe four lessons in reading or math. Um, so that's kind of been, been our motivation. So as you can see, uh, we looked at last month, our reading personalized instruction. Uh, we had eighty-five percent of our students in that ten to twenty-nine minute range. Uh, and then only thirteen percent of students in that sweet spot are thirty to forty-nine minutes. Now, looking at it in our current month, we now have fifty-four percent of students in that sweet spot of thirty to forty, to forty-nine minutes. Uh, which is fantastic. Having that more time on task, um, having those conversations with, with students. Yes, they might have gotten to that thirty to forty-nine minutes, but have they passed the two lessons? It's the conversation that, uh, me or my aide have in our class every single day. Are you spending your time passing the lessons? Are the lessons that you're doing based off of, we have a diagnostic test that we take, as we talked about. Those lessons are based off of the diagnostic tests and how they score. We can then go in, as we learned with, uh, having professional development with i-ready. We've had this conversation of, well, we're seeing that our students are really not on this level. Are we able to change their personalized instruction? And we were told, yes. So we could go in, we've learned that, um, with the help of our LSIC president. She's helped us kind of really be like the main person to focus on that, like, learning all the i-ready, uh, in and outs. So we personalized instruction to kind of see growth in our classrooms as well, um, and our pathways. For tweaking to fit, uh, the students' needs. Uh, we're able to plan our small group instruction based off of that as well, um, based off that personalized instruction data. Uh, and form our instructional groupings. Uh, students seem to be really motivated, uh, by the lessons that we're doing and by the challenges that we have in the, and the rewards every year, or every week. So, as Ms. Wright said, we have those announcements every single Monday morning. Them walking past it in the hallway, going through specials, seeing their face up on the board, seeing, oh, I was it last week, I really wanna be it next week too. Um, and she didn't speak about this, but in our, um, like, overall class. Uh, so our presentations, we had, and celebrations, we had, uh, little owls that go along with it. So we have, uh, Winnie, the Winchester, uh, reading owl, and then we have Marty, the math owl. Uh, so these owls then go to the teacher or the class that performed the best. So which button do I have to stick to?
The forward arrow.
Forward arrow, okay. Okay, so now the math. Uh, same type of focus, uh, having a conversation about, um, our math instruction. We had about eighty-nine percent of students in that ten to twenty-nine minute range. Uh, and now we have only fifteen percent, and we had five percent in that sweet spot of thirty to forty-nine minutes, and now we have sixty-two percent. Uh, so that means we have a seventy-four percent increase in our lesson time. Uh, and time on task. And then eighty percent of our students are at that thirty to, uh, forty-nine minutes or more each week. We've had an eighty-nine, uh, percent average on lessons passed as well, which is fantastic. I did not talk about the percentage pass, uh, on readings, we had seventy-six percent average, um, lessons passed as well. So these are great games that we've seen, uh, going along with our celebrations, going along with just having those daily conferences. It's really nice to have the kids be able to talk to you about, well, why are you not able to pass this lesson, or why did you score this on that? Being able to see it as a teacher, like, what, what kinds of questions are being asked, or in what ways they're being asked. Um, so I think these are great games that we've seen.
Um, the next, um, part is, you know, again, my big focus is how do we invest in our students and our staff? Um, model schools, the county has been gracious, um, providing the schools that support and get, um, coaching visits, um, through that. Um, but I also saw between my model schools conference visit in, um, in the summer when I went to the actual conference. Um. Um, we use some of our CSI money to have the model schools coach spend more time with us to work on names. So I've had three visits so far. Um, we started in the summer, which was just kind of getting acquainted, getting to know each other. Um, so Mark Cohen is our model schools coach. Uh, we just kind of took this towards the school, we visited the classroom, he met with our leadership team, has a great conversation with our leadership team. Um, we just talked about our student performance data, where we were, where we need to go. We looked at our model schools IPA results, and they did the walkthrough. And we really talked about going, you know, focus on teacher collaboration, that's aligned to our school improvement plan. And also about how data, we can leverage data teams in increasing the lover, level of rigor and relevance in our instruction. That was just kind of setting the stage for our work. Um, he came back to us in January, and we, um, our discussion was highly focused on professional learning communities and our data teams. Um, professional learning, can't talk, professional learning communities are who we are, data teams is what we do. So the what is really looking at our priority standards. What standards are we teaching? Do we understand that? How are we, how are we approaching that for instruction? The when, um, is looking at our pacing guides and our curriculum maps. And the how is you really using those rubric, rigor rubrics with paired with rigorous verbless, that we actually, um, might even introduce our student engagement rubric with that. Um, and looking at our structural alignment and consistency for every classroom. And we did some learning walks together, and we really collaborated together, communicating to teachers about this, um, the learning walks, and then what our next steps would be. Um, in February, he came back, we still continue to work on building our systems together. And really structuring our professional learning communities and data teams and what that's gonna look like, so it can be sustainable. Um, and so we spent some time planning our professional learning activities, um, for this past Monday, our PL day. And it focused on teacher clarity and the professional learning community planning process. Um, and he'll come back again in March, so I'm really thankful, I'd like to thank the county for investing in that, I think it's been a great. Um, addition for me as a principal for the coaching that I'm receiving, receiving, but also for my staff. He's gonna spend some time working with our staff, he's working with my academic coach. Um, he's very open, he's a good listener, and when he leaves, we have a product, and I feel like, um, that we've got something accomplished and we're gonna be helping to move our school forward. So thank you for that, uh, opportunity. We also, as a CSI school, have a math coach, and that is provided by the Department of Education. And it is through the S R E B, and it's, if I say it correctly, the Southern Regional Educational Bureau. Um. And their goal is to provide support to us on, um, practices in math that's focused on school improvement. Based on our specific, specified goals and needs. And she let us know we will receive six visits. Um, so far, this will give, we had two coaching visits. Um, one was in January, when she stopped by, she was only there for, in the morning with us. Um, just introduced herself, she visited with me, um, she met with my teachers, just talked about who she was. Um, and then, um, just kind of, we did some walkthroughs together. Um, she is coming back next Friday, and she will actually provide some professional learning for my staff. She will be spending time in Ms. Barr's classroom for my third grade, and she will provide, um, a model lesson for my second and third grade teacher together in there. Um, they'll watch that for half an hour, then we'll come out and debrief what they saw, talk about that. But prior to that, they'll do an hour and a half with her of just professional learning and math. They'll look at professional learning first, then they'll watch her teach, and then they'll get feedback. And then we're gonna also do the same for my K one teachers, she's gonna go in and teach her first grade lessons. My kindergarten and first grade teachers will watch the same process. So I'm excited about that, the discussion that'll come out that. So, so that'll be two visits, I should have four left after that. Attendance is the other reason we were identified as a CSI school. Um, when I look back at our data in twenty-twenty-two, our chronically absent rates, students who missed eighteen or more days of school was at thirty-six point eight-four. And twenty-twenty-three, it was thirty-eight point three-three. And when I looked at December's rate, um, for twenty-twenty-three, this current school year, our kind of the absent rate had already grown to thirty point seven. So part of our discussion with our state coordinator in December, Louis was part of that conversation, is what are we gonna do? So an action plan that we put in place was that we were gonna call home, we have a call-up, we're calling home every single day, a kid's home. That doesn't come to school, we're gonna find out why they aren't here. So for the month of January, and this is just an example of one of the call-ups that my staff turned in to me. They just call home, ask for the reason why their child's not there, we pick up the telephone, we make it personal, we're calling home. And so between the month of January, we get to, um, And so between the month of January, we get to um. The end of January, when I met with Kelly and Lewis again, our chronically absent rates um dropped by five point seven percent. It was at twenty-five percent at the end of January. So in the summer it was thirty point seven, we implemented this by the end of January and dropped to twenty-five percent. So we saw a decrease, so that's improvement in that. So our goal is to sustain that between now and the end of the school year. And I think it kind of gives us an insight of some of the, we had a lot of flu temperatures. Um, but it also gives us a connection to our family to support and areas that sometimes we just didn't know needed support. And we can use some of our resources for that. And it's just about building relationships with our, I always tell my staff, the relationships that we have with our students is very important. But the relationships we have with our families is just as important. So I think that helps build that piece. And next we're going to have talk about school culture from campus perspective, so let's introduce Ms. Brooke.
Hi, good evening, my name is Brooke O'Connell and like Principal Wright said, I am a parent of a seven-year-old whose birthday is today, Jeremiah. He's in first grade, um, and I have served as PTO president for the past two years. And I will say that has been one of the highest positions of service that I have ever filled. Um, building a follow-up, Principal Wright said about relationships. I will say as a PTO president, I'm trying to get in, I'm I'm in with the know, I got eyes and ears. I have relationships with everybody from the cooks to the custodians, to the teachers, to the principal, you name it. Especially the secretary because they do everything. Um, so I I've had the eyes and ears and I will say Winchester Avenue absolutely pri- prioritizes relationships. And based upon this growth that has been presented today academically, that is because relationships are built. Because no significant growth or learning can occur without a second significant relationship. So I will say one hundred percent, they value relationships. Um, we we value our families and and part of PTO too, our parent teacher organization, you know, we not only, you know. Support our staff and teachers there, we do little fun recognition things for them. Um, but family engagement, that's important. It takes a village to make a school what it is. And and honestly, I see this, us being a part of the school improvement plan, LSIC. We have an opportunity to set the standard for other elementary schools in Berkeley County. So I I see us as as an A plus school, yes, no school is perfect, there's always areas of growth, we're always going to be learning and growing. But I say from a parent's perspective, we are right on track. Um, we also um value community involvement from other businesses and organizations in our community as well. As we plan these PTO events for families tomorrow, we're having Somebody Loves Me Dance, so we're really excited about that. Um, and also as a reallowed West Virginia volunteer, I've had the opportunity to read in my son's class, first grade, every Monday. And to really feeling the classroom climate and the culture in there. And and again, relationships with those kids, they seem even like, hey, this is fun, you know, like it's so rewarding and fulfilling. Um, so and like I said, we, I hope to see as years to come, as I hope to serve in this position the next two years until my son graduates. Um, that we get more family involvement, more family engagement. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but Winchester Ave is the second most impoverished school in the county. And we, that is not, not a um. We still hold them to high standard. We still want to include them in everything and we want to speak life into them and say, hey, your current circumstances do not define your future. We're breaking the chains of poverty right here in this school. We are building relationships, giving them fun things to do and that itself is increasing the school climate and culture. Um, I love the posters too, by the way, I think it's so nice, I look out of school like, it's called J T P. And it's it's very inviting and welcoming, I'm always greeted, you know, people feel like, oh yeah, come on in, like people know me now. Um, but it's it's very rewarding there. And I can say that I would not want my son to be in any other school in Berkeley County, granted, I haven't really been in other Berkeley County public elementary schools. So I might be a little biased, but I will say it it has been a great experience for us. And you know, we can't always meet the needs of every family, every every student. But I love the phone calls home, um, my son was out for a couple of days due to sickness. And Ms. Collins gave us a call, hey, just checking in. That was there, like she said, we get in the know for things that we don't know. And if we don't have the answers, we have a team at school who will find the answers, whether our school counselor will be looking um for for interventions or resources or services. Um, our social worker through the Martinsburg Initiative, like we all work together, I will say that. And um, I really hope that we can continue to have instructional assistance in our classrooms and every classroom. Because they, one, it will decrease the need for substitutes if the main teacher is out that day, that an instructional assistant. I always catch assistants saying that, oh, I'm just a teacher's aide. No, you are not just a teacher's aide, you have the power and the opportunity to change a kid's life just as much as a teacher with an education degree. Um, so I I hope that we can continue to fulfill those positions in the future. Um, and the school announcements, yes, like I said, my son's birthday today, he was like, mom, they're going to say my name with the school announcement. And he was an I ready high slider too, I think it was um for reading. Um, one hundred percent his name and picture was up there, he was so excited. And I I I personally like I ready, it gives us quick, accurate data at our fingertips. Um, and it doesn't take away from the time where the teachers have to do that testing one-on-one where it could be over a course of a couple of days. Um, so I really enjoy that as well and I know that time's coming up here. So just to wrap up, I love the growth that we have seen at Winchester Avenue. I am so thankful that I can serve there, build relationships, create change, speak life, not only to the kids and families, but the staff and teachers too. So I'm proud of Winchester Ave and thank you, Principal Wright.
So I went to the, I actually feel we are sort of successfully by day step by step. Um, at this time, if you guys want to give me any questions, we'll take questions.
I was there a month or so ago, you were at a museum though.
Oh, the the book, aren't they? Yeah, my husband had knee surgery that day.
Yeah, I knew it was something.
Yeah.
Um, I was so impressed by what has been occurring. Uh, just in, you know, just in viewing and, you know, the kids are always really positive moving there. But uh, one of the questions I had was the absentee rate, um, when it was so high. Was that because of COVID or because it was after that?
We've always been challenged with the high absentee, I'll be honest with you. We live in a city school, we have kids who, we have a lot of reverend rooms around us, very transient population. Um, there's some, I I'm thinking of one student now who splits time, mom and dad's having some issues between bunker hill. I've done, I've probably done more home visits this year than I've ever had my whole year there. Just because there's a need, you can't get ahold of parents, so we go to them. Um, so it, I think it's that the dynamic of our demographic of our school, not excuses, just an understanding. So it's trying to understand how we can support our families, but also the expectation is there that they need to be in school. If they're not in school, they're not learning and it's not okay to stay home. You know, unless you have a temperature you're throwing up, that's our message to our families.
So the phone calls, do you think that, I don't want to say, but it'll be.
I think they come like a school call all the time, maybe.
Excuse me?
And maybe they just, the the school's calling, so maybe it kind of puts some, makes them a little uncomfortable, maybe, is what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, because I think it's a great thing because before maybe they might have thought, well, you know, what is paying attention?
I think it shows that they don't care.
Yeah.
That every single day we're going to call you, even if we get um a note on T-Saw. I still, which is our communication platform, I still make that phone call afterwards, just to kind of hear them. And then sometimes you hear you hear the kid in the background be like, I'll be back tomorrow. You know, like you hear that type of stuff, so you hear that. And I remember doing a home visit with uh Ms. Wright last year and kid had been out for probably five days. And the fact that we had come in the rain to go to his house, he was like running up to her. He even paused and stuff, we're like, when are we going to see you? So having that connection, I think is very big to, and I've seen, but we you saw that list. I've seen my list dwindle, run a window, so.
But the decrease, the decrease in the absentee rate, there's some. Mm-hmm. And and um, just for Mrs. O'Connell, now you said you were going to be there until your son graduated. High school?
Graduate third grade from Winchester Avenue. Graduate gentleman.
Just come back and visit.
And then people are like, can you still deal with me down like, hey, I'm going to have to go to a new school.
No, wait a minute, eighteen wants a baby sister, he said.
It's his birthday.
I don't need, but I'm going to tell you now.
Maybe substitute.
Other questions?
Talked to her about that, we have talked to her about that.
I think your energy is contagious, I wanted to dance a little bit with you as you were moving around. So um, I I just want to commend you guys on um the growth that has already been seen. And we're not really even that far down um the path here. Um, and I I wanted to say thank you for for being teachable. We talk about all the time about, you know, teachers' teaching, but teachers being teachable is such a great quality. And so I thank you guys for for being teachable and for being involved so much so that you're just absorbing everything that you guys can get your hands on to to just make. Not only yourselves better, but the community as a whole better, so thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah, appreciate that.
And I and I think what's occurring has put really a spark. Mm-hmm. Aliving the, I I don't know how to say it, but I just feel a difference in what's occurring there. Now, I I had some questions about the assess some assessment, but I think Mr. Murphy did too, so he can answer.
Mr. Martin, next, um, what's, do you know what the population was of this school last year with enrollment numbers?
I do now off the top of my head, it fluctuates between that hundred, we have two or are you talking pre-K and no pre-K?
No pre-K.
No, okay, because I usually, I could, I'm responsible for this, so I count those all as my kids. So usually our enrollment fluctuates anywhere between a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and thirty throughout the year, it fluctuates.
So with pre-K, I always count.
I do too. Every student matters every day.
So what it would, is it uh forty?
I added forty more, I had one pre-K last year, they added two to me this year.
Mm-hmm.
The paper uh Mr. Murphy gave earlier to us, I think it was, right? Um, the last year said a hundred and twenty-five students are are economically disadvantaged and that's a. Very, very high percentage of percent with the, I know there's um. A lot looking at you and your school, but just the growth that I saw, it's definitely good signs and it helps the state. And definitely model schools is definitely hopefully a good sign. Um, I have another question, but I'll let Mr. Murphy.
I'll say at that point, they are breaking chains.
Yes.
They're breaking chains.
We we love our kids, we love our kids.
There can't lie, I'm a full-fledged press.
Yeah.
Yeah. I saw Damon's hand up.
Okay.
Damon's, okay, I know he laughs, but I I just wanted to make sure that, okay, before he went.
Okay, well, yep, I'm here. Um, first of all, I want to say a happy birthday, Jeremiah. I was going to have Pat sing you happy birthday, but I don't think any of us want that.
Moving on.
No, but I did have a question, um, Scott, I saw about how the coaches, uh, the math coach and others are are helping for model schools. Um, my question, I guess, for Miss maybe it's Burkhardt as well, is during these coaching sessions and all these other things are. Is is the board office involved in that or how how is that being reported to the board office? The reason I'm asking is because model schools won't be there forever, so once they're gone. How will we make sure that we are, that everyone's on the same page for um what is working or what is not working? So that can be continued after they are gone and so that the teaching and learning department um can maybe take those things. To the other schools or, you know, to help all of our students.
Well, how about if I start and then just Burkhardt, Mr. Ballomex can add to that. So our model school visit, um, when we're finished, uh, my coach, he kind of types up a synopsis of what we discussed and our plans going forward. And I think he shares that with our teaching and learning departments um and the model schools um program all together. Um, and then we have Robin Lopez is our designated from the teaching learning department who comes out. Um, and she's doing walkthroughs based off the rigor rubric with us together, um, she's um. I set her the date coming in March, which I'm expecting her to come out with my coach and me and my academic coach and walk into those walkthroughs together. Would show me part of that collaboration um with us and we're looking through that same lens and building that together.
Um, and also when we're talking about um the department, um, we need the department team meets with model schools and the coaches. And we do uh especially um talk about our CSI schools and they are aware of that. Um, so we are working with them as well and we are also doing walkthroughs without the coaches. Um, and that information is given to the principals to use um as they see they want to use the walkthroughs. And um also when the coaches are there and our members of our department are there. Um, the coaches do sit down with um the person from the department who's done the walkthrough and the principal. And they discuss the data that they have looked at using that uh rigor rubric. And also specifically um how to talk to teachers about it as well as um help the principal. Um, coach the teachers and understand the dynamics of of. The walkthroughs and how the department is moving forward with that. Our intent moving forward, um, hopefully, um, it is a three-year process with model schools that would have to be approved each year by the board. Um, and then we want to continue that. Um, rigor is so important when we're looking at student achievement and being able. This was something we had been working on, but with the help of model schools, we're able to really focus in on that. And um have the department focused in on that and work with principals so that principals can help teachers help kids. That truly is uh the whole idea behind model schools.
Okay, the, well, the reason I was asking is because I just wanted to make sure that um during those coaching sessions of the various ones that someone. As much as possible is there just because um everybody hears the same thing. So it's not.
Yes, I agree.
Being reported and, oh, I I left out a part or something like that so that everybody hears the same thing at the same time and. You know, any discussion can be had right then and there, get it worked out and move forward.
Yeah, Mr. Wright, um, I was there in December with Mark and Kathy for for a while, he had some great insights talking to to Mrs. Wright about. Um, how to speak with teachers about what what they were seeing in the classrooms. I have the pleasure of being with other coaches throughout the the district. We're learning with the principals, so that's why we're there. We we actually kind of chose to go with them so that whenever model schools does eventually leave it go away, we're all still speaking that language. Um, it was very important for, I know the entire department of teaching and learning. That we look at those rubrics the same exact way that the principals are looking at them. So we do those walkthroughs together, so we're all learning from each other and those coaches. So it's been, it's been, it's been phenomenal and um, yeah, we have been out to support the school.
All right, thank you.
Or the questions, please, panel?
Only other thing I would say, I mean, I kudos to you guys for doing stuff. I mean, uh, some of the questions that I had are obvious right here in the data, so my questions aren't there so much. Um, just to let you know, my husband's birthday is also today. So great men have been born on February twenty-first, okay, I'm just saying. So I have to put that plug in, um, but you will say happy birthday to him soon. I I already said happy birthday to him, um, so he'll he'll probably want it another time this weekend. Um, I just, I I really, real quick, I just wanted to say thank you again for everything. This is, this has been phenomenal, this is a a great report. So and I know you guys are still working towards, one question maybe I I will ask. I know you guys have implemented for the absenteeism, um, the the callback. What other, are there any additional steps to help continue to improve those numbers? What are there, are there explorations into other opportunities past that?
I would say that's a challenge for us, um, moving forward and that's definitely something we're having conversation. I have our halftime social worker. I have our half-time social worker, so she works with some of our population. Um, and so working with that, my counselor, Kristy Heaton at the central office.
Yes.
And just doing, what else can we do? Sometimes it's thinking outside of the box because it's just an understanding of our demographic, but how can we reach them to show them how important school is? And success, yeah.
Or the questions?
Well, I just kind of follow up from what Mr. Wright said to Mrs. Burkhardt. So, um, and Lewis, Mr. Moll. The teaching and learning department, um, is documenting everything that they get. So that they can use it elsewhere and other schools that might be. Well, maybe have some issues that Winchester Avenue has, but not totally.
I know, I don't know about teaching and learning, but I know when I meet with Kelly, who is my state coordinator, there's a format that we use. So, um, there's a template, and then before we, we, I go and pin all my data, and that's our talking points for the meeting as monitoring, are we moving forward? If not, what do we need to do differently to get different results? If we're doing good, how do we continue that success? Like the callback, the attendance, we're gonna have to, how do we have that conversation? How do we continue this, this change? Um, so we have a structure every month that we're using to monitor that piece, so that's documented for us as a school, and as far as.
And I think that they mirror, they, they asked, that one of the reasons why I think I'm there also is that county perspective, they ask what we're doing. So they say, oh, you're, you partnered with model schools, what does that look like? So they pull that into them, their plan. Oh, you, you use our ready, they pull that into their plan. Then, so we're, they definitely don't want a school disjointed from our county and our county initiatives. And they also kind of double check about the things that we are using. Overall, the state is like saying, hey, we approve that, cuz our ready is definitely something they approve. They, they understand the importance of having outside organizations, such as model schools come in, other counties have them in. They do sometimes recommend that whenever you're struggling, so those are, those are the pieces they, they absorb in Kat's plan. Um, but I, and maybe this is Burkhardt, it's the, overall, it's a rubric that we use for model schools, we use it countywide. So all schools, it's consistent. There are three things on there that you can, that we look at. Yeah, and each school's maybe has slightly different plates on there, but that gives you a springboard for where you're at, where you're going.
And, and I would say as a principal of the model school, I think it's pretty cool. I was sharing with Ms. Bart today, I did a classroom observation today of her. And I said, you know what, we've done a lot of conversation about, um, rigor and that rubric, and maybe just we introduced the student engagement, and I said, man. I see a different lens for me sitting there watching her observation and the way the students were engaged, the conversations they were having. And I was thinking about these indicators and where that would be, so it provided me a different lens, a way to look at instruction. So we, I can help coach and improve that for my school to become better. So, again, I, I, I really am thanking for the opportunity to work with model schools. If I've enjoyed it, I feel like I'm growing and learning as a principal. I feel like my staff is learning, starting to learn and grow as well. And it's given us a common language district, right? And it keeps keeping us aligned.
Yeah, and I would just like to say, um, that we look at the department strategic plan and the district strategic plan. And that all of that is aligned so that the schools can use that same common language, like Kathy said, that we are using. So that it does filter down to each school, and that we, um, discuss this at our instructional meeting as well.
Other questions? I have several.
Sure, good.
Uh, first, uh, I, I share a couple of pieces, said the improvement on the steel, the eye ready. Although I am concerned, green is surpassing the red, both reds, but there's still a lot of red there.
There is.
Okay, um. Dr. Mark Cohen, is he's also at Rosemont?
I think, I think he is, yes.
Yeah, I, I've met him. He's an impressive retired administrator from Montgomery County. And, uh, I, I've sat in one of his, uh, discussions. My concern is if you could go back in your slides to the ones looking like this, first to the language.
The yellow one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This one?
Yes, ma'am. To, uh, Ms. Burkhardt gave us a very helpful book for the LSIC's blog of schools.
Okay.
And I took the time today to, for you all here at the table to look at the third page. Here is, you're looking at packet with, and I'm Mark Winchester Avenue, uh, both math. I, I'm confused about the, uh, for example, on the PowerPoint here. We have grade three, uh, thirty point seven seven on your paper and thirty-two point two eight. On the paper, on my paper, uh, for reading, I have twenty-five percent. And I have, uh, for the, for the district, uh, previous page, I, I forget, but. The bottom number jobs, but the top, top number is five points over what it says on this sheet. Do you all see what I'm talking about? I, I put one, okay, there you go. You have it, yes.
Yeah, so I would tell you, this data is, the, the data I put here is the data that Kelly. First, I wanna ask. Mastinople, um, put into my, this came off, this was from the Department of Education proficiency data. I'm not sure who put this together. Yeah, this is from Kelly, this is from our Department of Ed School and Grouping Coordinator, this is the data that she put into our plan. And I pulled directly off of that from that.
I'm just concerned the board.
No, I understand. Yeah, I understand.
And on, on the math, if you go over to the math paper.
Okay.
On my paper, it says forty-six, on yours it says fifty, and I'm just pointing out those inconsistencies there. My next question. Uh, and you addressed this, uh, on the last sheet, the mobility rate.
Okay.
I, I, I think I understand, you have for your enrollment, three hundred and fifty, uh, four hundred and forty-four, that's preschool, correct?
So, um, I have all sites, so Pike Side Learning Center is attached to me, so those numbers are reflected in that number. And I think I have maybe Norborn, also I have all sites that are attached to my school.
Okay, my, my question is, uh, and I taught at Winchester Avenue a number of years, and I saw the movement from, uh. The demographics of the, of the neighborhood. But you have a lot of children coming and going. So how do you first evaluate a student's growth? When, what percentage of your students are there from September to June, would you say? In Winchester Avenue?
You know, I don't have that data off the top of my head, um.
See, on this sheet it shows us that, and all the other schools, but yours is mess, is.
Because of. Um, I would tell you, we have transient students, I give between Berkeley Heights, Rosemont Springs, most all of the county. We also have, um, a very transient population between New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, West Virginia. Virginia, North Carolina, and Maryland.
It, it's, it's difficult to measure people who are not there the whole year, and that's, and that's.
And I could point example of a school year, and it might have been curious first year at Winchester Avenue, is we had two third-grade classrooms when we started. Um, we started the new year, um, half of my second grade, kids who were my second grade, I only had half those kids back, the other kids had moved on at the start. They were a whole new, I was like, I don't even recommend Kathy's kids. So, I mean, that was very evident during that year.
And something, something else that I, I noticed on, on the sheet here, I was figuring out. Uh, the mobility rates, this data is based upon the twenty-two, twenty-three test results, right? I mean.
The identification was at the school year, it would've been twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah, well, see, I, I was looking there because you had, now it, it looks big, you had twenty-one percent mobility rate. Those about five, five teachers, four or five teachers who actually either transferred or resigned or retired, but.
And I've bought, I'll be honest with you, I've bought a lot, a lot of great teachers to Pennsylvania, Maryland, and Virginia. So less than my teachers leave, they've gone out of state.
Right, if for salary or for other reasons, and, but that's, that's another, I'm trying to see why you were on this list. And that would be a contributing factor if you have a high mobility rate of teachers leaving. I, I've also looked at the number of permit subs, you have three, out of how many on your?
I currently have.
Yes.
Um, I have, I'm still good with my billings, so I have a kindergarten teacher who was on permit, she just finished her program. She just passed her certification. My other kindergarten classroom is a permanent sub. Um, first grade, they're both certified, but one first grade teacher went out, um, in early November through May on maternity leave. So I have a perm sub in that classroom right now. The other first grade teacher went out on maternity leave over Christmas break, and she's out until the first May, perm sub. So I'm gonna have, have two perm subs in my classrooms for the second semester. Um, second grade is a teacher I've had, third grade's a teacher I have. Um, in my special A classroom, perm sub, I had in my pre-K classroom, I have a certified teacher. And the other, the other one I have a certified teacher, and my other, my other pre-K classroom is a perm sub. So I have multiple perm subs across my bill, either for maternity leaves or just filling the spot that I couldn't fill with a certified teacher.
Okay, all right, you've answered my questions, um. I know, um, it takes a caring staff, dedicated, consistent. And, uh, I, I, I hope the eye ready and, and the, the stretch transfers over to these test scores. The two areas you were cited on, academics and attendance.
And, yes, sir.
And one last question on attendance, uh, I'm glad you and, and somebody else that you mentioned, visiting the homes.
And my nurse has gone out several times, I actually went out yesterday.
Yeah, it must be under professional development, teachers were allowed, the classroom teacher was given credit to go make home visits. Maybe we should discuss that, not just at your school, but at all schools. Uh, if a teacher's coming to knock on your door and say, you know, I really miss your kid. And I hope to get him up and get him on, good thing. What percentage of your students are walkers versus bus students?
You say a quarter, maybe? I'd say, yeah, about a quarter.
Quarter of walkers.
Bare pickups.
I mean, I mean, I.
It, it could be, could be a third.
It was, it was very convenient when I taught there to keep kids after school, and the parents came in. Forty-five minutes after school for remediation seemed to go a lot deeper than the regular day because of the sun time.
Well, and I'll share with you, this year, um, the Boys and Girls Club was able to get a grant, and now we have Project Learn at our meeting, four days a week after school. We didn't have that before, so they get after school tutoring for forty-five minutes, and then they either get picked up or they get to the club for the rest of the evening. So that's been, and if that number of students is growing, we're seeing more students, um, participating in that opportunity for them. Uh, I'll share another thing, I think with our attendance, that probably that has helped as well. This year, my nurse has been phenomenal in, um, collaborating with students or, um, community health. And we have the health, um, van come out every other Wednesday. And I think we, where they tell us is we have a lot, a lot of participation with students and staff going there. Students who didn't have the shots they needed, who wouldn't come to school, we were able to get parent permission sign, she takes them out and gives their shots. Kids who have an ears hurt, let's go, we go back to class, we're fine, and they call home, or they, they're safe, they write a prescription, and then they go out the door. They go get their medicine, they can come back to school the next day or the day after. So I think that has had an impact, um, a, a good impact for our staff, for family, our staff and our families as well.
How many schools, do you, do you know how many schools have the health van?
I don't know, I think Tusculora has it, Burke has it, I have it, maybe some of them, I think Mark's for five.
I think there's seven.
There's seven, yeah. I, I really, I, I'd like to have that, yeah. Well, it made a difference, yeah.
Any, any other questions, Mr. Wright or others?
Mr. Stevens, close.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to commend, um, the work that Winchester Avenue has put, put in. Uh, to, to build the relationships, and if you could think back to our very first days together as, as an interim superintendent and a new board. One of the things that I talked to you about was the playbooks that we were putting together and putting out, uh, across the county. We emphasized rigor and relevance and, and those topics. Winchester Avenue has stayed true to that, the, uh, you know, the, uh, relationship with model schools, the relationship with the Department of Ed. They're taking that and running with it, uh, so, you know, we as a county identified things that we saw that were needed. And Winchester Avenue is, to their credit, taking advantage of the resources that they've been provided. And, you know, if you look at their achievement pre-COVID, they were one of the top achievers in, in the county. You know, one or two things can happen in a pandemic and, and, um, you know, you mentioned the. Perm sub that may have struggled with the subject of math, and when you only have one or two classes that can, that you're being graded on. That could be a huge percentage, yes, and you can, you can turn that school quickly, you've taken advantage of that, so I wanna give you kudos for that.
Thank you.
There's some good things about our small school and then some bad things.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you so much.
We'll take a break for a couple minutes while the next screen comes in. Bring him in, bring him in. This is our second session. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Stevens.
Yes, um, so at today's, uh, special meeting, we are speaking with the, um. With the two schools, um, in, in Berkeley County that have the designation of. With the two schools um in in Berkeley County that have the designation of um CSI. Um you've heard from Winchester Avenue, you will now hear from Martinburg North Middle. I'll turn it over to Ms. I, the principal.
All right, now presenting North Middle. Um this is our staff. We have very nice staff. We, I couldn't get one where everybody was looking the same way, but. This is the breakdown of our staff and I thought it was important to mention, you know, we have twenty-nine and a half advanced teachers, four intermediate, three initial and twenty-three and a half. Long-term substitute teachers. We're blessed with a Tis, two counselors, three social workers, nine instructional, special ed aides. One ISSA, two and a half secretaries, four custodians, six cooks and four administrators. Um this, I'll talk about this a little bit later, um but these ladies were modeling it so well. I had to post this one, uh the Northway. It's our common language around our school, be safe, be respectful and be responsible. Um, the North News, um I'm going to be um highlighting some things that we have added on this year and some things that we've consistently done. But this is something uh we, on our climate culture survey, have gotten high regards for communication with our parents. Communication with all stakeholders and the North News is one of the reasons why. So I give a lot of shout out to Rachel Deverfantis. She does this every Sunday evening, um and we do, the parent order is always informative, um something they need to know to help their middle schooler. We also have the guidance communities, but the whole thing happened in class is really neat. Um this is just one of the examples. Um they'll send in pictures of things that happened around the school. Here's Mr. Cal's science students working on their paper airplane projects. And um they'll, we have this every week, so everyone in the school can see what's happening around the building and highlights good um teaching practices. Right, more students are coming to North Middle School. We're really excited for that. Um we have put a lot of time and effort and I'm going to share with you in the next slide, some of the things that we have done to be successful and to get our kids in the building. Um because I stopped looking at my notes. Oh my gosh, so sorry. I want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Um, oh, you're back. Oh. I forgot to flip over. Um sorry, but we definitely have um put a great effort into this and you can see on this slide. Um we started the year in September with our chronic acid rate. Um and we're at twenty-three um point oh eight percent there. And then our average daily attendance has improved. Um and looking back, um. It's, if you see the green, that's what my attendance worker, if it's green, it's good, it's red, it's not. Um we have lots still work to do. Um what we're not going to give out because we really want to improve in this area because we know that if students are attending school regularly, that. It is going to link closely to their academics and the improvement there. These are some of the things that we put in the place to help with students. But we also know that prioritizing mental health and their well-being is essential for their academic success. So we know that healthy, healthy mind fosters concentration and cognitive cognitive functioning. Um you can see our social worker, we have attendance groups that meet regularly. She may give them a piece of candy on the side, I can't swear to that. Um but she does meet with them to track their attendance with them. Um and also, um she has given out gift cards. Um for on the monthly for most improvement and things like that. We have weekly attendance meetings with Wendy Cox, our a worker from the county. We've done him visits, which has been eye-opening to see what some of our students have to come to school with or without. Um the home visits have really um made a difference. We actually sent our safety officer on one of them and he came back floored. He was like, I can't believe that. You know, it it's just, everyone should do it, everyone should get out, see their kids where they live. Um our head strong group is a great group. Um it's promoting self-esteem, but also provides hair care, all kinds of things for our students with personal hygiene. Those have helped students who maybe didn't want to come to school, they weren't feeling as good about themselves. And it's been a great, yeah, we feel that has boosted our attendance. The other thing is our weekly class meetings, really focusing on the positive aspects of school. All right, uh we have, we also want to reward them for coming to school. So every nine weeks. Our safety and support schools does meet and give attendance awards for those things. These are some of our other programs at North that I want to highlight to you, um because they're all essential um to uh our improvement. And CIS, which you heard of before, Communities at School, we are blessed because I think we have the best social worker in the county for this program. Um he not only manages sixty students, um and has specific behavior goals for each one of them. And like a treatment plan that he goes through that's all the way tier one, tier two and tier three supports, but he also um meets with students who are. In general, like classes, just having a bad day, having a conflict. Um it is part of his program, um but I feel like he spends. I just think two days of him is worth five days of an average person. He's pretty amazing. Um Martinburg Initiative. Uh that's been a support to us. We have a half-time social worker. She's just kind of getting started this year. Um but we have ho- have high hopes that she'll have a good case load too. Um and that's uh case management. Our Handle with Care is an ongoing program. If a police is in one of our homes at in the evening, we get notified. And that has helped us. We um don't really have a lot. We we haven't had a lot this year, but when it happens. Our teachers are made aware, um our counselors connect with them so they can look out for things. Um Project Aware. This is wonderful partnership with East Ridge because when they get there right at school, they don't have to go leave their homes, the therapist comes to them. And then finally, our listening program, the pastor right was there today. He comes, and I honestly, I've been at North for thirteen years. And he's been a figurehead there since I arrived. Um but he's meeting with students. Kids need to be heard, they need to be talked to. Um they need to sometimes just have someone listen to their thoughts and he does that for them. He listens. Right, our number one priority, being a C S I school, they come in and they do a diagnostic and ours was in March. Then they report out to us in May. And then over the summer, a group of us went to Morgantown for a week. We worked on the the pieces of our diagnostic and we decided that improving behavior and the state also decided that will be our number one priority. Um oh, everything else is a priority, but this is number one because we know that has to happen before academics end. Um so we have continued with some things and we have added some things. Um this year, we have our school-wide plan with tail slips. Tail slip stands for time and instructional loss. And um these are opportunities for teachers to have those resorted conversations with students at lunchtime. And say, you know, why did you do this? Who did you harm? How can you make this better? And when they get to a certain level, level three, um the third tail slip, it's a parent phone call. So we try and give them the opportunity to fix the problem, then it becomes a parent phone call and then it becomes an admin lunch intervention. And then we go on and so forth. We have a ladder that we follow. Um we have spent a lot of time with PD training our teachers on how to have those conversations with students. So there um is a balance because we know that we have to have a balance between punitive and restorative. We can't change hearts and mind if we slap a consequence without the restorative. In Tellus Spark, this is our second year using Tellus Spark and it's amazing. I had a parent meeting yesterday and I was able to pull the log from a Tellus Spark. And this, all stakeholders, everyone who has a child can see these notes. I was able to see the number of tail slips the child has, the number of phone calls that were made that day. And I could talk and summarize it for the parent what they needed to work on. Um I've admitted all those means, but I felt like I knew this, the child, I could get a good picture of them from this picture in Tellus Spark. Um I didn't mention it on here, but we also have Smart Pass and that is our system for students going out to the hallway. We limit four, we have four stalls in the bathroom, so there's a limit of four bathroom passes. But it's really helped if there's an altercation or a conflict, we can put, limit a pass of two students that don't get along, they won't be on the way at the same time. And um we had sent a report to the state, it prevented seven hundred interactions the last time we sent that in. So it really helps by blocking those passes. Um they can go to the bathroom anytime they want, for anyone who's worried about that. But it also um provides, if it's not available stall, we don't want to go to the bathroom and have a group of kids hanging out there. So we use Smart Pass. Um I was also able to use that in a parent meeting yesterday because um. We have had children spend a lot of time in the bathroom and they're missing black stuff. So we're able to put a percentage number on it and really the parents get a bigger uh and eye. For those things. Um we do have a level of planned response. We follow the levels. Uh I think the counties provide it so we can be consistent with board administrators handling discipline. Um there's assistant principal at every grade level and then they rotate each month. Um we want to make sure that we're on the same page. Um rolling desk, we have a rolling desk, something like this. Um it doesn't have two levels, but it gets us in the hallway. Because that's where we should be. The action happens in the hallway, our students are in the hallway, our teachers in the hallway. And so our teachers have two planning periods. And if I'm in sixth grade and I'm scheduled there, uh Mr. Lamb is there now, they are. Office hours should be first and fourth period, and then they're in the hallway the rest of the time. Now, it's not a perfect system because sometimes we have people coming in, you know, you have to be in the office, but it is a goal of ours to be in the hallway. Um a culture of consistency, uh we spent the end of the year and mid-year again going over the Northway, be safe, be responsible and be respectful. Um our cell phone policy is often away, we have steps for that and no hoods. And we explain to our students why we have the rules because they need to know the why behind it. We don't want to do this because it's a safety concern. We need to see who's in our building and know that our kids are safe. Um sometimes if kids know the why behind rules, they're more likely to follow it. But we still have those that want to come down the hallway with uh hoods on and we. Tell them to take it off and they usually um comply. We don't have a lot of problems with that. Um so, next is um. This is new, this just happened since January. Uh we had mid-year class meetings from the Advent team. We went to every. Single grade level in the small class settings and we, excuse me, I just ate at the garage on King and. Don't, the cream barbecue was not a good idea right before this. Um so. I'm telling you, it's right here. Um try to keep it down. Um. Oh, I do need a drink of water, that'll help. I told him, I was like, it didn't have any at back door, she had the same thing. But it's not as a little club for the garage on King. We did these mid-year meetings and uh it was great because I had the same script for every, every, um we split in half. Um two admin and two admin. Um and our script was around be safe, be respectful and be responsible. And the message that I wanted to send to our students, which every single classroom, they were in full attention, no one talked while I was talking, I was just really proud of them. Um but it mattered because we were in a small class and it really helped. Um our message was, we want you to be the best version of you. We're here to support you. And we believe in you and, but we need your help too. And these are our expectations. We're mid-year now, we should have these now, but we're going to just revisit them. So you know what it means to be safe, to be respectful, to be responsible. And um Officer Ollak joined us in January. Um he is a a welcome, I mean, just a welcome. So um he sat in a parent meeting with me yesterday. Um which was needed because sometimes when we're dealing with our community, it's not always peaceful. And he really brings peace to that situation. He's a calming influence so we can communicate with with people who might come in a little hostile. Um that helps, but it also helps with our students. They see police officers in a class of light and he's building relationships with them. He is um telling them to take their hood off and um he's just there in the morning to greet them, which has been a positive. Uh we had a discipline PD refresher on Monday and that was um Ms. Hall, or Ms. Kepler was able to be, I don't know why I just said Kepler. Holly Klebner was able to be there. It went really well. Our model schools coach, Katie Gibson, and I had a phone call to kind of plan it. And we did role plays and scenarios. It gave our teachers the opportunity to communicate over basic things of how would you handle this in your classroom. They didn't always see eye to eye, which was the reason we had those scenarios, but at the end, we were able to kind of bring it back. And have consensus and say this is how we would, our consistent approach for this. All right. We. Behavior data. So this is our most recent behavior data. Our Safe and Support Schools team meets every month. And they review this. The state had asked us to break down the number of tail slips for each grade level. We have two sixth grade teams, there's four teachers on each. So we broke it down. Um the number of students have one, two, three and four. After that, it goes to admin lunch. After that, it goes ISS and then OSS. Um we have had some of the explosions, you know, the state put in, three explosions can be ISS or OS, and we have had several of those as well. And those will be reflected in these numbers. Support for teachers. I started to bring our books, but then I thought, no, they don't really need to see what we do. But this is Todd Littler, who's one of my favorite authors and my teachers, we've been at our rookie team meetings, we've been sharing some video clips from Todd. Um because we want to do what great teachers do, right? We want to know their secrets and so we've been sharing that information. I mean, with the new teachers, um it's every week when we start off and then it goes to once a month. We have multiple PDs. Uh our county does, I I think, better than anybody, like I I go to state meetings and I go to county meetings. Our county rocks it when it comes to PD. The rigor and relevance, the things that they've done, well, I'll go to state meetings and they're doing very similar things and I almost feel well-prepared. Um so we follow along, we do that with our teachers, um and I feel that really prepares them. Um I was actually talking to Ms. Updike, my teacher, and I'm so sorry, I didn't introduce you. Um and with me, I have Ms. Updike, she's my sixth grade team leader, and then Amy Lopez, who is one of my parents, a a very important eighth grader. Um and so they're here with me tonight. But I was having a conversation with her, with our new teachers who didn't go to school to be a teacher. Where I, I felt like if I had to get all of this into them. And my new coach said, simplify it, slow it down, simplify the message because you're overwhelming them. And so that's what I'm working on as an administrator, how to simplify the message. And um that's kind of what we are focusing on. Rigor, relevance, um building relationships, kind of learner engagement. I do send out a mission Monday. And it looks something like this. Every Monday, there is a focus, and this is part of my coach Katie said, pick a monthly theme. So the monthly theme this month is restored practices, last month was relationships. But this is one that we did on closure, just an example of something to make them think. Um and give them some practical ideas that they can apply in their classroom. And I do this every Monday and I share it with my county people and my state people. Um Tech Tuesday, my kids does this. Um she just did an amazing professional development and she did playgrounds. I wish you could have seen it, um because she, it was just top-notch. And the stuff that we can do for our students. Um just an example, she had an article that was written in English and held it over top and automatically put it in Spanish by holding the iPad right over top. And then we had a conversation, Spanish to English, back and forth with this translate app. I was just, it's just amazing what we, what we can do now. She just had that training Monday and um she and I sat down for an hour, went through the items. So she sends us out every Tuesday for our teachers. One note, um this is a part of your Microsoft Waffle and we've used it probably, what, seven years? Um seven years. It's where all of our information, if you were on a committee or a team, you put your minutes, your agendas, and that way you'd miss it. Or you just really want to know what somebody else is doing in the building, you can go there. I share this with the State Department and I also share it with the county instructional team. So they can, so we can just be transparent and they know what's going on in each of our teams. Um support for academics, um which even though behavior is our number one priority, academics has to be our number one priority. That's why we're a CSI school. Um we're blessed to have four Title I teachers. We have three reading, one for each grade level. And then we have a sixth grade math Title I teacher. Um we have a math intervention since seventh grade. Um and one of the things that we've tried to do as a leadership team is really focus on how we can help our students. Even since COVID, which I even hate saying the word, but even since then, it's, there's been a bigger gap. And the things that we're coming up with is that tutoring is making a difference in in students. The students who are getting that extra help outside of the school day, um they're, they're making better gains. So. We have a send a day tutoring and we make, we often make referrals to the um Brooklyn County online because that's such a good resource. And it fits into our parent schedules from five to seven. This year, new to our school, um one of the things I worked with the State Department on was how to improve that callback time in the middle of the day. So we could get more instructional minutes in and it wasn't a glorified recess. Um so we're going to really have a project-based learning period. It's focused on the standards, the students get choice, um it's rigorous, involves collaboration. Um and it's very project-based, so it's more engaging for them. Um and we've seen some really good things come from this. Um our IXL form assessments, we still learn those and you'll see some down here in a minute from fall to winter. Um in addition to that, this year, our county started our common form assessments with Cambian and that's been wonderful. Um I have a really go-getter assistant principal, he has all my, all my students rostered, which that takes a lot of time. So we can get immediate results on how they're doing on the common form assessments. Um and that's been nice, um that collaboration at the county level when they get together. All right, outside of agencies, um we use a lot of acronyms and so I put both here, but I want people listening to know. We are a CSI school, I mean, I get our scholarship and what does that stand for? The CIS is Communities at School, but this is Comprehensive Support and Improvement. Um our, my person is Kelly Masson, I will choose the sign to work at my school. And then um they also. Uh hired SREB, which is the Southern Regional Education Board. Um they are national, but for this purpose, they work within my math teachers. Um we have a wonderful person, Carrie Melstrom. She's been in her building once and she's coming back on the twenty-eighth to do professional development. She's gonna model an excellent lesson and then that's all well with my math teachers. Um, model schools, I'm, I, this, I'm most excited about model schools because I feel like I have a life coach finally and I've always needed one. Um, she really just came in and kind of looked at things. And she has a way and um, I've talked to Tana about her, I think this, she's gifted in that she can look at something immediately and give good responses. Um, she specifically asked for me to work on, um, I have three new assistant principals, building capacities with my leader, with the leadership. Um, so we put things in place for model schools, um, I send them their sun, every Sunday evening, they get what's going for the week. I take it from each of our online calendars, we meet every Wednesday and we're doing a PD together for assistant principals. In addition to that, um, I have a mid-year meeting with them, I, I mean, with each one of those separately, twenty minutes a week to go over things. Um, but the goal is, again, to build capacity, um, I don't have any one of them just doing discipline or one just doing, I mean, um. Observations, they go grade levels and they rotate, so our goal is to build them up, so somebody that wanna be a principal, they have, they have that opportunity. Okay, shifting right into data, um, we do um, IXL in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Um, and these are our results from this boy and boy, this beginning of year, middle of the year. And um, you can see our sixth grade, who's working tonight, um, they um, are performing much better than our seventh and eighth. Um, our leadership team has met, we've talked about incentives, um, I'll show you the math real quick, this is the math. Um, and again, sixth grade, it's probably much better than seventh and eighth. Some of the things that we've done, um, our incentives, it will be a built-in leaderboard incentives that have um. Really helps with the competitive level, uh, we give out certificates for those that get a hundred points, um, three, oh, we have the three hundred points or more. Um, and we also do like little, there's different things, um, sometimes they give food rewards, other times it's an activity. But we do try and advance those, yes. Um, okay, um, one of the things that is very important, um, to get students to wanna come to school is to have those extracurricular activities. And um, we have a variety, you can see the list here, I won't read them all to you, um, but with me, from Maryville Update is my student council. Um, and she's like, you didn't have it on there, I'm so sorry for that, um, but our student council's done a lot this year. They um, are a good group in our school, um, as far as they organize our Veterans Day program. Um, they've collected items for local vets and for the command society. They also, um, when we did the Take a Vet to School Day, it's so great to see our kids interacting with veterans and they're telling their story. And that was a big part of um, what they did. Um, they also have like to have dances and things like that that are fun, but we wanna get our kids involved, we realized that in middle school. We have one sport, well, two, I don't wanna downplay the cross-country because it is a sport and so is cheerleading, so three. Um, basketball cheerleading across country and um, it's not year-round sports, so we have to have other things to get them involved. I have students that are sewing, um, they get so excited, um, they're knitting, um, right now they're cooking, the vacuum was really popular too. And then I have some pictures that I threw in here, um, Hour of Code, these are all technology-based right here, except for the social studies fair. Um, I don't, I did not choose that picture, but that's my nephew's um, social studies fair project, he did a wonderful job, and actually visited there. Um, Hour of Code and then um, they're doing a garage band with original scores of Music Enquirer. And then, um, we always had to do a separate frog dissection lesson with paper frogs. When we had the real thing, this year we were, um, my teacher applied for a grant and she got these rubber frogs that we can reuse. You just kind of replace the cavity and so everyone was involved and it was really, it looked kind of, you could look at it, it was lifelike. Um, so that was, that was an upgrade last year. I have artists, I, I'm just featured one, but my students really are, in our classes, I'm amazed at what they come up with. Um, this is just one of the featured for Black History Month. And then our JV girls, um, basketball's a big deal at my school and they take very pride in their skills, so we did win a championship. Yeah, what'd you say? Oh, yeah, um, I didn't mention, you know, we do, yeah. We, well, we have been in the paper for different things, because I believe that when you tell our own story and we like to be positive. Um, we were in recently, the kids did make focaccia bread, um, they're always doing something creative. Uh, pepper, pepperoni rolls a lot, and if you ever come and wanna be a social studies fair, our, our judges get like mini turkey rewards, things like that. Which is nice, um, but we've also had two authors on staff. I have one, Mr. Ware, who's written, do you know the title of this book?
French and Indian War or something.
Something about the French and Indian War, and then I have another um, fiction author, Mrs. Heck, my seventh grade teacher, she's working on our second book right now. So we, I love having authors on staff, I think that's pretty cool, um, and it's just nice to have those people represent. Next, I guess in March, the next board meeting, I will have um, a nationally board certified teacher that will be recognized at Musson High. So that's pretty exciting, I have one who's almost finished, um, so, we do believe that we wanna grow the people that are here, that are stuck with us. You know, having twenty-nine minutes teachers, I wanna make them happy, grow them, but we also wanna work with those two to get them what they need. So, I have spoken for a long time and I hope you have questions for me.
Mr. Wright first.
None right now.
Okay, Ms. Law.
Oh, I had a couple, one more. They, um, do you think it's gonna be possible to uh, increase the halftime social work with maybe four times through the March program initiative?
So, um, right now she comes Monday and half a day Wednesday. And I think um, once she gets uh, out of her paperwork, they, they're based on if they fill out paperwork that they've received them. So, I know that we can give her the business, um, and so I think they'll increase her time the more she, you know, drums about this.
Um, and they, uh, now I'm probably pronouncing this wrong, the Intellisport.
Yeah, that's right, Intellisport.
Now, parents can all want for that.
So, we can share things with parents and they can see their own child's, um, yeah.
They can all want for their child.
Yes.
And is that being used a lot?
Um, on, in, in our staff, we've really improved and um, do you wanna speak to that?
Oh, yes, so, um, if I give a student a high five because they've been doing great in class. Then I can click a little button that it shares information to the parent as well, or whoever is signed up for that. But not all parents are signed up for that, um, so I usually try to just like copy and paste it and send it through um. School Agie, um, if they're not signed up, um, but I like to do those positive phone calls home, um, if they're not connected. Or, or some other things, but Intellisport's great because I can go in and I can see, ooh, this kid's had a bad day. Because this teacher's written this, this teacher's written this, ooh, we better do some parent contact, you know, because it's been bad across the board. So, um, and it's very helpful for us to have that communication.
And we used to do like paper phone logs, it's really up to that. And taking, you know, so it's, it's no, you can be anywhere, you know, and you can get that information.
Much quicker too.
Absolutely.
I'll go ahead and move to Mr. Martin, you are your. I'll, I'll come back to you, Mr. Martin.
So we don't have a STEM, we've, um, we have done um, STEM projects, like we do, we've several things, we've done science carnival. Um, involved with, and brought in Shepherd to do um, STEM projects. Um, we've participated in Spring Mills has had a really good STEM, we've participated in that, but we don't have a STEM lab. Um, we've done things like robotics and things like that for after-school programs. Um, and we've had some STEAM opportunities to bring the arts in, but um, nothing specific that's going on right, right this minute.
Some of the project-based learning during PBL time, that's on his STEM-based stuff. Um, and um, sometimes they do add that A component as well, but because it's a four-week rotation. So you have more time to be able to do some different activities like that, but not everybody, um, does that.
Gotcha. I don't get any like new things for, to increase the science score.
Yes. Yeah, um, I think the hands-on, when we get them in sixth grade, they haven't had a lot of um, science ex- exposure. Um, so, we spend a lot of time teaching lab safety, getting them prepared on how to respect, you know, respect lab equipment. Um, we have, I, like, right now, I was in a sixth grade class the other day and they were doing an online waves lab. So we benefited from some of that, um, as far as hands-on, again, it comes with, we're teaching behavior so that they'll properly use a lab. Um, they've modeled a lot of things, um, as well, um, but the higher up in eighth grade, they're doing more, and it's, it's a lot more hands-on. Um, that I've seen in the approach, yeah.
Ms. Law?
Um, yeah, my last question, they extended day tutoring, how many students you round about are taking?
So we prepare snacks for forty, but that's for like the whole program, all of the programs together, um, daily, but we prepare that many. Um, and I would say it's actually the ones that stay, around ten to fifteen, probably, you know, it's a small amount. I don't, I don't know how many, I don't know how to find out how many are doing the virtual tutoring, because we use that a lot when we're in parent meetings. With every student who was in danger of retention, we started the first nine weeks sending letters and then we met with them at semester. You know, with the parents, um, who didn't come to your parent teacher families, we pulled every kid in, I met one online again, but said this is what we need you to work on. Um, so we, we pushed the tutoring a lot, so they could help to bring up their grades.
Do you think um, somehow it could be because they can't get picked up by their parent?
It could be, and that's why we're hoping that the virtual tutoring would benefit them, because they, they can run from five to seven, a parent can be there in the background, making sure that they, you know, get on. Um, and I think that we've tried to make it accessible, the county's done a good job with that.
Thank you.
And sometimes they have to go home and get their younger siblings off the bus and they have other responsibilities.
Um, so, I just wanted to circle back on the, the behavior data, um. It looks like, and if, please correct me if I'm wrong in, in reading this, this is for incidents from January third to February fourteenth.
This is the, yeah, this is our most recent data, we, this, when we get together for state and supportive schools, we keep ongoing data in our OneNote. Um, then we look at it in Chucks, um, and this was the most recent um, S3 meeting data.
I would love to, to know if, if these numbers have gotten better, improved, gotten worse from previous.
So that wearing has like the tail slip one up, um, we, she had asked us to do that, so we didn't have that for first semester, we just had total number of tail slips.
Okay.
Cause that's what they originally asked us to do and um, then kind of changed it, so we flipped the script a little bit. Um, we could tell, like, as far as lunch detentions, ISS and OSS, we'd be able to tell the difference of, uh, for that. We do, like, for four tardies, I can tell you, like, a big, the big ticket items, our tardies, once they get four, it's a lunch detention.
Okay.
Um, and uh, they, they, it's an admin lunch detention, because we want to meet with the kids and talk to them. Um, and also our teachers aren't available at that time. Um, and then the other thing is sometimes skipping, you know, not going to class in time, and that's a high ticket item. That we have to really work on doing bathroom scans, um, making sure that they're getting to class.
Yeah, cause I knew that that would probably tie directly into that learning loss that, that can occur and then affect the scores.
Absolutely.
So, I, I was just curious, you know, what the, the things that you were implementing at the beginning of the year and throughout.
Yeah.
How are they actually impacting the kids?
Um, I, we try to, when they become a repeat violators, of course, we have behavior contracts where we have the parents come in and then we follow up with them. Um, once I want to say how they're, if they're improving, we need to fix something. Um, we, because our goal is to keep them in school ultimately, um, because they're not learning outside of school. Um, but, you know, sometimes they just get to the level, they have to be suspended, there's no choices. Um, and uh, and then that becomes hurtful, because they're not learning, you know, they're not, they're missing out. Um, but it is, again, necessary, we just try to work with every kid, if it's a conflict, doing a no-contact contract. We try and be creative in our purchase, so we can meet every kid's needs.
And I know that there's, um, there's a, a group of dads that, that have gotten together and they have different pockets of, of. People in different schools, um.
Watch dogs?
Yes, watch dogs.
We had watch dogs, yeah.
In the past. Yes, is that something that would be open in the, you know, in the future? I'm seeing a lot of stuff that you guys are doing from a staff perspective, I'm thinking from a family to bring in that community piece.
Honestly, I think it's worth a future shot, um, we, when we had it, we had gung-ho fathers, you know, that were right in there. And we did dads and donuts and brought them in to kind of pump it up, um, gave them first, but then they decreased, you know.
Right, right.
But it's also worth revisiting, I think, you know, to look and see if we have an interest, maybe sending out an interest inventory to see, do we have dads that would be interested coming in.
And I'm wondering how that would end up then impacting, helping to impact your data.
Yeah.
For uh, behavior.
I think any, I think any positive seed that you can plant is gonna make a difference, even if it's a one line, it's a positive seed, yeah.
I just started, the only thing I was gonna add to that, you know, I'm almost at more than thirteen years from needing to network. But tardies, even then, all through that time, was a big issue. I'm not sure what that's about, but.
I can tell you something we've done in sixth grade that has really helped, um, but it's rare because sixth grade, they go, cause they come from fifth grade. And they have one teacher and then they go to have a five teacher, so in sixth grade, they go from Xavier Gale, Updike has her class. She dismisses and gets to Mr. Little's math class and then he lets his kids go in a line, so it's like a tag system. So we don't have the tardy issue unless they're coming back, sometimes for unified arts, that has really helped in sixth grade, we're trying to, you know, build those foundations. So we hope when they get to seventh grade, it will lead to them being on time to, seventh and eighth, we're just trying to get them to walk to the right side of the hallway, you know. Um, without their hoods and um, dabbing each other up. But we have the biggest issue with them wanting to walk their friends to class. And make themselves late, and I'll be in, right there in the hallway, you've already been passed me once, why are we going back this way, you know? They'll just pass by their class, and so we try to get them just go from point A to point B, you know. But socialization is very important to students, very important.
Yeah. Middle schools are.
Mr. Wright?
Uh, yes, um, speaking of, of discipline, I was uh, just looking over, you talked about the hoods and the phones that you mentioned on the, on the slide. Do you find that it's been difficult being consistent with discipline, um, in terms of getting. I guess the, the backup of the parents, are you seeing any pushback from parents when you try to be consistent with the discipline?
So, um, I'm gonna speak very frank and honest, yes. We have seen pushback because even when we have an emergency situation where phones are not allowed. I had, I, cause I believe in people, listening to people and trying to understand, a wise man told me to seek to understand once upon a time and sitting right in front of me. So I seek to understand, what are the parents', what are their thoughts, and they wanted to know that their child was safe. And we've had that, um, during emergency and I get that, but I try to explain our code of duty as well. But we do have parents that will say, I purchased this phone, you were not taking my child's phone, and they will keep their phone. Um, recently, we've had meetings where we're, we're begging parents to leave the phone at home or let them check it in in the morning, check it out. Because it's become such a distraction for their child, they can't step away. Um, and we feel like they're on our page and they're on our side and then the very next day, same, same problem, so. It's definitely a challenge, uh, because uh, parents have a different concept of the phone use in school. Um, but it, it is a distraction, there's no one who can say that a phone is not a distraction to educational process. It, it is a distraction, that we constantly have to make sure that we are consistent on. Ours is the first time it's taken, it goes in the office and a kid can pick it up at the end of the day, the second time the parent has to come. So we do have steps that we follow, um, and teachers wanna teach, they don't wanna have to stop and address cell phones. So they, they, they do get tired of that, when they have to stop and say, for the waiter phone, I'm speaking for you, I go, but I'm sure that, yeah, I'm, you agree, so. Um, if we didn't have to have phones in school, I think it would be a great thing. Um, we always encourage parents, if they wanna reach out to their child, lunchtime, they have forty-three minutes in which they're allowed to use their cellphone. That's a great time to check it, text them, call them, because we know that that's their way of communicating, right?
So, so, I'm sorry. Okay, so, so I guess the question, you mentioned how um, some parents um, are saying, no, don't take my child's phone. But you don't really have to listen to that, do you? Can't we still just, I mean, if, if the child is breaking the school rules, regardless of what the parent says, you can still take that phone if they're breaking those rules, is that correct?
I, I can't physically take it from them, but there, I just explained the next steps and consequences, because then it becomes insubordination, which becomes in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. So I just make sure that they're aware of the next steps for not complying with our cell phone policy, which is very simple, off and away. We even sing it to them, off and away, all day, all day, off and away, all day. And uh, we try to make light of it, but they, you know, it's very important, um, that they know the next steps, because that's often what we have to do for the insubordination.
Okay, that's why, I just wanna make sure, it's not really the cellphone issue, I'm, I'm just, my main point was just the consistency and, and if. And finding out if you had a lot of pushback from parents and, or regardless of whether you're getting pushed back, I know that if the consistency is there, that. Um, whether they give the phone or don't, that there's gonna be consequences, and the more they shorten, see that there is going to be follow-through. Then, um, the more likely over time that they'll actually listen, uh, cause a lot of, I know a lot of the students, they don't get followed through at home. Um, they, they know how many times it takes for mom and dad before they actually get to a point to do something. Uh, because a lot of, I know a lot of the students, they don't get followed through at home. Um, they they know how many times it takes for mom and dad before they actually get to a point to do something. And as we as a school system, we have to actually do that even faster than what a parent would do. Um, just because we have so many, you don't want that child to distract from the rest of the class, so.
Right, and I try to be supportive of the kids, because I know they're tired at the end of the day. And we had a meeting with a mom yesterday and she's, I'm not saying her name, but the agreement was that the child will check her phone at the end of the day and check it out at the end of the day. She came to school today and said, Mom, and I have a new agreement. And I imagine that kid went home, had a tantrum of some kind, threw a fit. And mom just came because at the end of the day, parents are exhausted too, and they they kind of throw in the towel early rather than fight the battle. Um, but we don't have that option because we're trying to give them place of learning and we need consistent follow through. So we don't have the option to throw in the towel. We have to hold them accountable.
Further questions from members of the board? Thank you. First, you have a, you have a a challenging feeder system. Do you communicate, which schools, do you have students coming from Orchard View and Able School or just Able?
Able School and Orchard View.
And do you get a chance to communicate with their schools or do you just catch them when they come in, come in the front door?
So I I I don't speak to them on a regular, you know, Dr. Smith and I have um, had conversations and we will share like rubric information when they're coming for honors. Um, we don't consistently meet, you know, or anything like that, have that. Um, and I, Able School has a new principal, so I've not had the opportunity to spend time with them. Um, but we do, as far as, I mean, we have twenty-one percent of our population is special ed. So we do share those kids when we're writing IP's. We write their goals and their services. And they provide the present levels. So we do have those relationships with them. This is great. Oh, and Sixth Grade Academy, this is not necessarily a connection with the adults, but with the students. Um, we've had really great success with our academy. We're gonna continue to do that this year and I have some ideas for the summer. Um, that I haven't shared with anyone yet, so I won't put them out in public, gotta get them approved first. Um, but I, because I really wanna keep them learning over the summer. Um, Sixth Grade Academy, they come and meet their teachers before school starts and we do fun like STEAM and STEM activities with them and they get to try out their lockers and stuff like that.
And we also have the step up day um, again.
They walk over Eagle and OBI.
OBI, yeah, buses over, so that we get to meet the students and go over some expectations. So that they don't have that huge anxiety uh, coming into middle school.
And the teachers have really liked that. Um, OBI, when they came over in particular, they said, we really appreciate you taking the time to walk us through and talk to us, so.
So the academy will.
Yes, yeah, um, average is about a hundred students that come um, each year. Um, it kind of, you know, varies ten or twenty one way or the other, but it's been very consistent, yeah. Um, and sometimes it gets um, difficult because some classes won't get the flyers or something. And then it's an influx of, oh, Sally signed up, I need to, you know, go and do this too. So um, sometimes word of mouth kind of gets it out there, but.
Miss Appley does a postcard that we take over and then goes some of them and we also have an online sign up with a QR code, um, which just helps to do it, yeah. Yeah, she's been, she organizes that for us.
The um, you have a fifty percent mobility rate, I'm looking at the paper here, so this is a problem also Winchester Avenue, I think it's a problem where if you have CSI schools, you're gonna have that, you know, if you didn't, they weren't here at the beginning of your year. They left before the testing at the end of the year, so everything you invest in them walks out the only when they, they show up. Uh, you did not have the uh, GSA scores on your paper here, one, there's members here, third page over.
I think they're on the handout, but this, that they made me, that this handout, they're on this page, the one line, yeah.
Okay. Well, I I'm just saying, they're very low.
They are.
They're very low. And that's one of the, one of the reasons you are a CSI school academics, attendance, what would be certain?
We get twenty-one phones as well. Um, we receive federal dollars, so you're responsible for using those federal dollars wisely. And if you don't have the test scores, then they're gonna recognize and want you to work on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That leads to, uh, well, I, I just, I'm I'm really concerned about the scores. Uh, and that leads me into my other question. Do you follow the county grading policy?
Yes. In in what aspects? I mean, like, yes.
What I'm saying is, if a child turns in a paper with ten, ten spelling words and they miss all ten, do they get a zero?
Yes, that's, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, on a fifty. Yeah, no, I, we had after COVID, uh, we had um, where we made our lowest, our lowest F was a fifty. We did it the first semester, because we had so many students who came back and weren't in the business of school, they dug holes that could never get out. And you can't fill an entire grade, so we did make, like for the first semester, our lowest F was fifty. We did change grades, we didn't. But that's the lowest that they could go. So then when we could get them back in the business of school, turn it around and improve them, they had the possibility of passing for the year.
Okay, so they're not, so the fifty is not.
It's not part of our grading system.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, your behavior, I I saw where you had a hundred and seventy-five out of school. Let's see, where was?
It's up.
Yes, last year, looking at last year's numbers, you had a hundred and seventy-five. And just the other night, we had Mr. Marquette with the transitional school and you only have eleven, I mean, five uh, at the transitional school. Is there a disadvantage abuse in the transitional school?
If we could get transformation, transportation, we would have ten there or eleven right now. Um, some have dropped to homeschool because they couldn't, they couldn't get there, they'd made the choice, um, because they just can't get them. Um, and we don't have that option anymore. So we're, we're working for creative ways to hold the real big time offenders.
Okay, um. Here's one of my questions I ask uh, every year. We have students who, I'm trying to find it on my list. Chronic absences, and I I just went to the space here down, down toward the bottom of my paper, top three absent students. Um, one student attended forty-two days out of a hundred and eighty, I'm not asking for names. And uh, and they were promoted. They were only there twenty-three percent of the year. Now, you had two other students who were only there thirty-two percent who was retained and another who was there only thirty-five percent and was retained. But I I'm concerned that we're rewarding kids who don't show up to work and and I, I'm sure the child who missed, who was only there twenty-three percent probably have been retained a couple times before.
So I I, I'm not sure each one of them, I mean, we have one, I wanted to say that I think was a chronic health issue.
Yeah, they're, they're, these are all not.
These are all general, okay, because we did have some that were not in percentage of time because of chronic health issues, okay.
And and Ms. Burkhardt.
And they're not. I, if I saw their names, I could speak to like each one of them, but I can't speak to her number. Yeah, I'm sorry for that.
But I I'm just concerned in our school system, the students who do not attend, do not fear retention because of that, that's just an opinion. Um, you have a mobility rate, we already set at fifty percent. You have a double rate and you pointed out a permit serves uh, than the county average. The county average is fourteen percent, I think, and you have twenty uh, no, fourteen percent and you have twenty-nine percent of your teachers' permits, so.
Yeah, working on that. Um, one of my teachers was just fully starting today. Um, in special education, so should be board approved, hopefully, if you guys choose to next time. Um, and since the school year has started, we have had at least two to three, um, well, I I just get confused year to year which ones. But several of my long-term subs have become full-time going through the off start. We have great options now for them, so a lot of these long-term subs are in the process and I look, I have high hopes that they're gonna be going for that, so that's a good thing.
And hope we can re- retain.
Yes, sir.
I mean, there, we wanna retain.
Yes, yes.
Oh, um, do you have troubles vaping?
Yes.
Yeah, how, do you have any suggestions? I mean, I've talked to the um, the architects, that could you put uh, in our new schools, of course, they, we're talking about day three, so I don't think we have to worry about vaping there.
I have a system, who, who came from high school that had the detectors in the bathroom. And you have to have somebody to follow up on those detectors, you know, that's not tied up with something else or they're not effective, right? Um, the wand of power that we got, that really helps because you can detect a vape on someone with that wand. Um, and that has helped a lot. Um, our middle school kids tell each other. And the amount, we've been very, uh, we've gotten to a lot of the problems. Um, but I just think the public needs to know how hurtful and how dangerous it is. Because we do educate them, when they come back, they go to ISS for a day and do a video. Um, but we have local businesses that sell their miners. Until that shutdown, we're never gonna really fix a problem. I have, I have parents that have purchased them for their children. Um, and so I don't, I always look at our problems as as adult problems first. Because kids are eleven to fourteen in my school, and so many times there are adult problems and we'll push it on the kids to solve it. So I think we gotta fix the adults and then we can help the kids.
Yes, and you mentioned the uh, uh, I don't wanna get into semantics, there's always saying the wrong word. The law officer retired who's in your school.
Yes.
Uh, you you've alluded, has that helped you?
Uh, if if, you know, if we were a month, we're about a month that it happened in, um, and it has been great. Um, he has a a spot up front now, um, he greets the students. I think it's been good for our students, just the positive um, relationships that he's forming. I think it's good for them to see, um, I don't think they knew who he was at first because he's playing clothes. Um, and uh, they didn't necessarily, I think we're working on a shirt, you know, we're we're gonna get that, so they'll know. Um, and I think he's learning his role like he can do in a school. Uh, because he is a retired police officer, so we're in the process of finding that role, um, but he is a wonderful human being. Um, he has kids of his own and he cares about the kids at my school and, and they need more adults to care about them.
Finally, you're a CSI school and you receive assist, uh, additional financial support for staff and everything. And we're, we're gonna be facing next month, the uh, the depletion of the COVID money, I call it, S R.
S R.
Mm-hmm. Um. Next year, we're going through, this March, we're gonna be going through adjustments. How many of your staff are you receiving extra help from the state because of CSI status?
So I have additional assistant principal, um, a social worker. And um, my test was already hired through, before S R became um, a thing, so she was already there. So and I have two floating subs, which have, I should have mentioned that as part of my presentation. I'm trying to get everything in there and it's really helpful, but that has been very helpful, having the floating subs and I'll tell you why. Um, last year, we were not able to have our data teams because my teachers were constantly covering. And I think they met with you and said, we're just frustrated. I think they told you too. Um, this year, it's Mondays, our math data teams, Tuesdays are ELA, Wednesdays is a whole, whole grade. Um, Thursdays are socia's and Fridays is science, actually it's flip, science and socia's. And it makes it so I can go to the means, it's every morning. It also makes it that I, we don't have them to cover during their data team time. And the floating subs have just filled in those gaps great and they're quality people, doing a good job. They don't have their degree. Uh, but one out of the two is working on it right now, um, because he wants to be fully certified, but it's just taking a burden off of the teachers that, um, so they can have time to play in and collaborate.
How long will we have the funds for these?
For our people. So I know that um, every year, we don't know what we're getting from the state necessarily until a year. Um, but this is supposed to be year two implementation, then next year's the third year. And the fourth year is what they, has a name, I don't know what the name is for the fourth year, like a maintenance year. It's like, I feel like I'm on a diet, you know, it's like the maintenance, you lose the weight, you do the maintenance and that's what your goal is. But yeah, so that's what it is, maintenance. I'll remember it, that's, we all will, right? We're all gonna remember. Sorry.
I uh, but just my closing comment is that you have a challenging uh, theater system, neighborhood and everything else. And how many years have you been in North Mill?
Thirteen.
And you've stuck in you hung in there in one of the most challenging levels of school, and and one of the most challenging middle schools. I I hope that the help that you're getting will pay off in the improvement of the test scores.
Yeah.
But uh, you have my admiration towards you. Thank you.
Yeah, something else, super close while you're here, that's um, Mr. Murphy, you had inquired about this in the previous presentation. Uh, North is another school that benefits from school-based health services.
Yeah.
And um, Ms. Wright had mentioned um, a correlation between having school-based health and our absentee rate. And her presentation, and she's only had um, those services there for a year and North has had them for three years. And has been very engaging and, you know, welcoming and I hope that it's had that kind of impact.
Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, and I'm so sorry that you've mentioned that. They're wonderful. Heather and Andrea, they're part of our school. They come and help with dances. They really get involved with things at our school, um, but when they're there, they are amazing with their kids. Physicals, we used to drive kids to get their physicals so they could play basketball because parents just couldn't do it. Now we get them to sign a paper and they go there on Thursday. So thank you for bringing that up, probably. It's been wonderful to have them.
Even for the staff, I was able to make an appointment and get seen for, oh, I had no voice. So so she says that, but I used to get a teacher to last till the end of the day before they had to, you know, be absent. Now they get a note right away and they have to get covered, so it might be. I just couldn't talk. Listen, I had a notepad that said, good morning, and I pointed to the board to what the kids, and and I would point to a kid and they would read it. And the kids got on it. It was absolutely wonderful, so I I'm very thankful that my students are so good.
Ms. Lopez, would you like to say anything?
Well, I put three children through North Middle School. I worked at North Middle School for sixteen years. Um, my third one is in the eighth grade now. Uh, I really work out of district actually. But I love those teachers there. I think they do such a great job with connecting with the kids at North because North is a unique school. They have a a, a challenging demographic there. Um, but I am okay with my kid going there because number one, I'm a good parent. So and I think parent involvement is super important. Um, and number two, I really, I trust and I know all those teachers, I know the administrators. I, you know, I just, I just think it's been a really great experience for all of, all three of my boys that have gone through North. So, Becky's done a mayhem job.
How's yours with Mr. Stevens?
Uh, I just wanted to say that um, you know, I appreciate the work that uh, North has has done with the the teams, people that have been in and out of that, of that building. With model schools, with the State Department, um, you know, and and the, and the work with our uh, teaching and learning department, trying to make sure that we're consistently moving things forward. Um, and we've, we've had to circle around a little bit and and figure out where where our starting point is actually gonna be. Uh, and you're right, you know, the behavior, culture, uh, things in your building, and that's extremely difficult when you have a high number of, you know, one a third of your, of your staff that is in charge of setting the tone in your building uh, turns over or is not even qualified, um, and we're working to um, to educate that group. Um, but I I think that um, and Ms. Lopez is correct, that the uh, the school climate is, is um, unique and I think that your uh, your ability to embrace your community is commendable, so I think that's good.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All those in favor of returning, sent the signpost saying aye?
Aye.
Who's nay, but I said, we're adjourned.